We will begin with the invocation by the Reverend William L. McClung, Jr., Pastor Salem, United Methodist Church. Pastor, if you come forward with the invocation, everyone would stand for the invocation. And after the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, we're glad to have you.
May we be in an attitude of prayer. Holy God, we thank you for this night and it's for our opportunity to work together. We pray for our city that you would guide it and help it to grow, that we might be a community of love, care for a lifetime. We pray for our nation in a time of much division that we might set a model of healing and wholeness. Especially today, lift up the Salem community at the tragic death of a student. And I thank you for teachers and administrators and all those who are providing care for rescue workers who put their lives on the line day in and day out. So much of our children are carrying the weight of the world these days, and we pray for ways that we might help ease that burden. Tonight, I lift up to you our council members Abbott, Davenport, Dyer, Henley, Kane, Moss, Urin, Wilson, and Wood, Vice Mayor Jones, and Mayor Sessoms, that you would bless their work tonight, that it might bear good fruit for the whole of Virginia Beach. In your holy and everlasting name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor for coming down. We really appreciate you coming. Do you have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Mrs. Wilson's absent and vacation with her family.
Thank you. Also, I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the questions, please.
By vote of 10 to 0 with Mrs. Wilson absent, you have accommodated the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to reset.
I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the informal and formal session of November 21st, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
Mrs. Abbott and Mrs. Kane, would you all like to abstain since you were not here?
No, I guess I can't second it either.
I have another second, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Vote be 8 to 0.
Good job.
She was... I was here. Oh, you were here last week. It was a week before, I'm sorry.
Do I open a public hearing on the lease of city-owned property Meyer E. Obendorf Central Library regarding a coffee shop? Are there any speakers?
No, sir. No speakers.
I now go to the consent agenda and council. If you'd make a note when we go through the consent agenda, we are also pulling item number 10 under Planning. We have one speaker on that item. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances and resolutions. Item 1, which is ordinances to amend the city code, A, Paragraphs 9-3 and 9-4 and add 9-10, rate merchants and markets and creative districts. B, Paragraphs 21-3, 5-4, and 23-58, rate business permits for the residential parking permit program and add automated fee collection for commercial lots. Item 2, the resolution to move the January 2, 2018 sessions of City Council to January 9, 2018, and open dialogue will be scheduled for January 9, 2018. Item 3, ordinance to execute a renewable lease with Jolly Roasters LLC, rate a coffee shop within the Meyer E. Obendorf Central Library. Item 4, ordinances to accept and appropriate A, $2,346,000, $20 in surplus urban formula state and federal funding to the Indian River Kempsville Road Intersection Project and transfer local funding to the Sandbridge Road Nemo Parkway Phase 7A project. And for B, $500,000 in state and federal regional surface transportation funds to the Elbow Road Extension Phase 2C.
Thank you. Open a public hearing for planning?
Under Planning for Consent, item J1, which is the application of Elite Therapies, Inc. and Rosal Shops Associates in the Beach District. Item 2, which is the application of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, C.O. Jacobs Telecommunications, Inc. and Aimco Maple Bay LLC in the Beach District. Item 3, the application of McNeil Properties LLC and Reed Enterprises, Inc. at 3249 Damneck Road. Both A and B, which is in the Princess Anne District. Item 4, the application of Reed Enterprises, Inc. for modification of conditions to remove the auto repair use at Holland Road and Damneck Road in the Princess Anne District for deferral to December the 12th. Item 5, which is the application of Spence Crossing Properties LLC in the Centerville District. Item 6 for approval, Baker Villas LLC and Ocean Rental Properties LLC at Al in the Kempsville District. And Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor's abstaining on that item.
For sure.
Item 7, which is the application of Goodwill Central and Coastal Virginia, Inc. and Southern Bank and Trust Company for a conditional change of zoning in the Lynn Haven District. Item 9, which is the ordinance to amend and reorganize Appendix 1, Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code of the city zoning ordinance. Item 11, which is the ordinance to amend Section 111 and 203 of the city zoning ordinance, rate definition of municipal oceanfront entertainment venue, and delete the requirement of 10-year shared parking agreements. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? No, I need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By vote, excuse me, by a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the items read by the Vice Mayor.
I'll now go to item number 8, city conditional change of zoning from I-1 and R-2.5 to conditional I-1 at 373 and 411 South Bird Neck Road. At this time, I will give the gavel over to the Vice Mayor as I will be abstaining on this, and I will adjourn as such. Madam Clerk, will you call the speakers?
Yes, Your Honor. Randy Royal, the first speaker. And it looks like you're representing the applicant. You'll have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Jones, Members of Council. My name is Randy Royal. Business address, Kimbley Horn Associates, 4525 Main Street. I'm representing the City of Virginia Beach Economic Development on this project officially. And per this, this has been confidential up to now, but the Governor announced this this morning, so the end user we're talking about here is Global Technical Solutions, also known as GTS. I'll talk a little bit more about them in a minute. So we've got an existing property, the Old Alice Creek Golf Course, which is light industrial I-1 and R-2.5, you can see on the map there, going for a conditional light industrial I-1, which is in keeping with the comprehensive plan for the west side of Bird Neck Road. GTS is investing over $50 million in this project and creating over 1,100 jobs at an average salary of about $74,000. Very good use for this property, which was difficult for us to find a user with the Navy easements on top of it that limited what we could do in there. But in fact, we do have a letter from the Navy for their support. Likewise, we've met with the Sea-Tac folks, because we've been working for a long time to find something right for that property. Met with them twice, we have their support. I'm not sure I see Mr. Minns here tonight. He spoke at Planning Commission, as did Gary McCollum, but we do have their support. The owner has made a commitment. This technology, and I'm not going to try to explain it, but basically it's a carbon fiber technology that ultimately could replace lithium batteries. Very green energy-type device, but everybody that he hires has to be trained, so it's not like he's got people that he can hire immediately. He needs to train everybody. He's made a full commitment to start training the Sea-Tac folks so they can apply for as many of those jobs as possible, and certainly other Virginia Beach residences also. But it seemed like a win-win there for the neighborhood, another reason why they supported the project. We have... Have you got the rendering in there? There we go. So we've got an attractive building. It's a half million square feet. It's an industrial manufacturing facility. The front portion there is all office and layups. So it's a big tilt-up panel wall in the back, but what you see from the street is going to be that building. There's also extensive landscaping. We've worked with city staff and with Planning Commission to enhance that along the front edge, behind it. The building itself sits about 300 feet from Bird Neck Road, so it's not right up on the road as a lot of the other industrial stuff is along Bird Neck Road. We had some folks here speaking at Planning Commission, and I suspect they'll be here tonight to speak also. I wanted to try to address their comments up front, and certainly will come back up to address them. But what we have heard in at Planning Commission were traffic, noise, environmental impacts, stormwater problems, decrease in property values, and lack of notification of the project. Traffic, a study has been done. Your staff has reviewed it and approved it. Bird Neck Road is just a little over half capacity. Level of service, we're talking C. I know you guys are used to seeing E and F and having to deal with that, maybe a D. We've got a C here. It's a four-lane divided arterial, lots of capacity. And our project, while statements were made that it quadrupled the traffic of the existing use, the existing use was a golf course. We've added about 1,700 trips per day, still in the level of service C range. There's some concern with the U-turns that folks have to make on Clarissa Court across or Clarissa Court across the street from us. We don't feel that we'll be impacting that, because our movements are not really... We're not going northward on Bird Neck, and they're coming south to make the U-turn. Our people coming north on Bird Neck would make a left turn into the project. We are putting a right turn deceleration lane in for the southbound traffic into it. Ultimately, as I said, we'll have 1,100 jobs, lots of folks, 24 hours' work. But rather than have three shifts, there's three shifts, but they're divided further into three more shifts in each time, so that they all don't come out at once. Really, you've got nine shifts. Based upon that, we do not need a traffic signal there. However, staff wanted to make sure that if anything changed, if we had more workers than we thought, if the work schedule changed. So we've proffered that if it's deemed that a traffic signal is needed, we would do a study, Public Works Traffic Engineering would review it, and if they approve it, it would be our responsibility to install a traffic signal. Second item was noise. It's a very quiet use. I don't know how to describe it to you. It's way off the road. As I said, it's an energy product. They do have a manufacturing line in there, but folks aren't going to hear anything from that. They may say that they're going to hear cars coming out, but if they live on arterial roads, you're going to hear cars anyway. And of course, we all hear the jets, and it's nothing like that noise. Environmental impacts. Alice Creek is a great place. I hear a lot about wildlife over there, and they're afraid that we're going to impact that. We're not doing anything to the east side of Bird Neck Road. That's where all of them live. That's where Alice Creek is. Everything we're doing is on the west side. It's an old golf course. There probably are some animals out there. And quite frankly, our owner, with the green technology, is very green himself. He's asked me, can we, in the areas we're not putting building, can we put some osprey nests and things like that? So he wants to keep it like that as natural as he can. I mean, he even talked about maybe making golf course holes for his employees out of some of the old land in there that's not being used. Again, not looking to come in and just obliterate everything. And the site itself, I didn't mention that as an item, but previously, the folks said, why couldn't it go somewhere else? And they did look elsewhere. They looked all around Virginia Beach, but this is a unique building. It's unique stuff that's going in there. It's a half million square feet. We don't have that in the city available. They needed to find a site. And quite frankly, they looked at Florida, Mississippi, Oklahoma, and DC. And Virginia Beach won out over that to keep this manufacturer here. Stormwater problems. We will handle the stormwater. The concern was that we were going to be cause flooding on their side of the road or cause pollutants to go over that way. All of our storm drainage goes north. It does not cross Bird Neck Road to where the residents are. It heads north, hits the river, hits the Chesapeake Bay. It'll be handled primarily in an existing old borrow pit that's now a pond, which we will make more... It's called a type 2 pond. It's more pollutant-friendly, removes more pollutants by things that we will add to it. Decrease in property values. I'm not a real estate person, but honestly, right now, you've got an old golf facility. You've got old metal buildings, parking lot that's, nothing's happening in. Yes, you've got an old golf course. It's overgrown, but it's really, it doesn't look like much right now. This is going to be a nice-looking facility from the front. There's lots of landscaping there. The residual of the property, as I said, is going to be well-kept. They don't want it getting overgrown, so again, not a real estate agent, I'm sure somebody will probably argue with me, but I would almost say that the property values would increase by something like this as opposed to an abandoned golf course being across the street from them. Lack of notification. You all know, the letters are sent out. It's advertised. A sign was out one month before Planning Commission. But over and above that, we'd met with Sea-Tac before. Mr. Minns with Sea-Tac had another meeting. He got the names of all these folks and invited them. So we had a meeting with the Sea-Tac Civic League and with the opposition to one-on-one address and answer their questions as best we could. That happened several weeks ago. So I'm sure there's probably going to be some other things that I need to respond to, but it's a good project. It's good for the city. Very difficult property to find a use for with the easements on it. Jobs, tax income. Staff has recommended approval. Planning Commission has recommended approval, and we hope you'll do the same. I'll stand by for questions. More questions now.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just one quick question for her while you're up there. On the current site plan, the building, how is the setback from the street compared to the existing berm for the driving range? Is it further back or is it roughly the same?
Oh, yeah. The existing berm, if I had to guess, is probably 100 feet, maybe 150 or twice that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions, Council? Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
The first speaker is Marjorie Wise, and when I call the second speaker, they come forward to the front. Stephanie Sterner. Marjorie Wise.
Melissa Wise? Melissa Wise? I have a couple of names. Melissa Wise. Melissa Wise. No, I'm calling Marjorie. Melissa's... Okay. Okay, Melissa, come forward. She has it down. It is Melissa. I misread it. I'm sorry. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Wise. Frances, I go by Frances or Frankie. I'm a resident, 941 Watertown Court. I live down the road from the site. I'm here just to voice my concern. I didn't hear about this until yesterday, and I agree with the residents that this wasn't advertised well. My concern is flooding and what sort of chemicals they're going to be using in this factory. I mean, they're going to be making components for military vehicles, or, so the press reported. What are these chemicals? And if this building floods and goes into the housing development across the street, what's it going to do to those folks' homes and themselves for their health? So has an environmental study been done? And what are other hazards that are going to be involved with this manufacturer? I'm not against the jobs, but my concern also is the wildlife. That's a beautiful site, one that could be used to build a very nice park. So those are my concerns, and I hope you take them into account.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Stephanie Sterner and Frances Wise.
That was Frances Wise. So we're allowed to talk about anything? Because I thought that was... Clerk told me it was at the end that we were going to give comments.
You're up now.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Hello. I have two points I would like to ask questions on, actually. I'm Stephanie Sterner. I'm from PDA of Eastern Shore and Hampton Roads Chapter. One of my first questions is actually, I read a little bit about the facility that's being built on the golf course, and I was wondering, what parts for the military, what are they making? It couldn't just be all flywheel batteries. I'm concerned because, you know, there is a creek there that's connected to the Lynn Haven watershed, and I don't really want any toxins or wastewater poured in there, because a lot of companies do that. I mean, I'm all for green jobs, but even the military, which was mentioned in an article I read, is turning green, but they're still doing a hybrid process, and that's why they would probably be possibility for waste being dumped in that area. I mean, if that's been handled, I would like to know how they would dispose of that. And also, I noticed that the company that is working to build this day is from Romania. It's a foreign company. I was wondering why we couldn't get a contract bid for an American company? That way, we can keep more of our money in the Commonwealth. And point two is actually, this is another point of contention I have. We have, I was wondering when we were going to modernize the rest of our state and abolish the at-large elections. I know, I live in the Hambrook area, and I shouldn't be able to compete with someone over in the Kempsville district for my ballot, for someone who is running for representation in the council area. It's not fair that my vote would dilute the vote of a person who actually lives in Kempsville. It makes absolutely no sense. I think it would be beneficial for our community, our city, if we would have a real ward system where voters only vote for candidates in their ward and not at large. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Frances Wise and Gary Medlin.
Welcome, sir.
Mayor Sessoms and Members of Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Gary Medlin. I'm from 1028 Hillview Boulevard, Virginia Beach. An op-ed piece in Monday's Virginian Pilot emphasized that recurring flooding is the greatest threat to lives and property across Hampton Roads. To add to this threat, our city plans to develop the site at 411 South Bird Neck Road, former golf course. Unfortunately, the development would add depressing problem to a pressing problem for Virginia Beach in the form of increased stormwater runoff. No matter how environmentally friendly developers claim the site will be, the development means destruction of existing plants, compression of the soil with heavy machinery, and construction of a large building and adjacent parking lots. Stormwater must go somewhere so it will run off the site into an already overworked drainage system, adding to our city's most pressing problem. Have we forgotten about what Hurricane Matthew did to so many of our fellow citizens? There are many already developed areas in our city with existing buildings and parking lots. Use one of these sites if we need the economic boost the proposed factory may bring. Don't destroy an already existing benefit to our health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brandon Kessie and Harbor Lee. Get Gaal.
Thank you. My name is Brandon Kessie, and first of all, I'd like to thank you and the council for this opportunity to speak and your attention. You might recognize my name as I'm the one who started that Alice Creek petition online. I don't know if you, the council members, have noticed that petition online. Since its creation a little over two weeks ago, I have 800 signatures in opposition. I'll make that clear now, that I am opposed to this facility on Alice Creek Golf Course. My concerns for this project are pretty simple. Transparency, or lack thereof, select residents receive notifications about this City Council meeting that were dated 20 November. They received them on 1 December, and the sign in front of the golf course right now still reflects a November 8 meeting. Okay? Along with my immediate neighbors of Alice Creek, I live on Brooklyn Court, by the way, for the record, did not receive a notification in the mail that this facility was coming to my neighborhood. I feel like this is still my neighborhood, since I didn't, I don't know if they didn't think I was in a neighborhood or not. According to notification, it is state law that the residents be notified of such a proposal. I'm not familiar with that law, but that's what the notification said. All right? Traffic is safety, obviously. I believe the traffic study was conducted in the off-season. It is not accurate. I exited 264 onto Bird Neck just this last Friday. I was thinking to myself, there should be a sign, that lane is not a yield lane. You don't have to merge. You could just simply exit and keep going and merge after the first intersection. Right? That first intersection, at that time when I exited, the police academy had 30 new cadets out there doing head signals, training them how to conduct traffic, wave traffic through whatsoever. All right? Half the residents on Sea-Tac in Alice Creek have to make a U-turn, as previously stated. Obviously, that's not going to improve with 1,000 more vehicles coming through Bird Neck Road. I don't think so. The value, obviously, it's a huge question for our residents. I've been a Virginia Beach resident for 10 years, Bird Neck resident, Sea-Tac resident for less than a year. Spent a lot of money renovating my house, so I see why you think I am opposed to this. I would hope you would. How is underselling this property by a huge margin not going to affect our home values? Fireman impacts, the wetlands on this property lead directly into the Chesapeake Bay, the runoff, the additional military products produced by this company, and the increase in industrial-type atmosphere. We impact the bay in the most negative way.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Harsh Gaal and David Rooks.
My name is Harsh Gaal, and I am a resident of Brooklyn Court. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. So when I moved to Virginia Beach, it was not by choice. I came here because the United States Air Force said, guess what? You're going to Virginia, and you're getting stationed at Langley Air Force Base. First thing I did, I got on the website and Googled. What about Virginia Beach is going to make me want to spend my money here, buy a house here, become a citizen here? First thing that popped up was Mount Trashmore. Great, got it. I can go run around a mountain that's built on trash? And I thought, that's good thinking. But here, we're taking 70 acres, a beautiful, open space that some may perceive as a ill-kept area, but it's quiet and peaceful with jet noise flying. That jet noise, to me, means a sound of freedom. When I was deployed, I heard jet noise. I remember thinking, someone's going out there and letting the guys on the ground know that they are being taken care of. And that's what I expect these people here, that I go and serve, so you are elected to serve the people. You're public servants, and I expect you guys to take that time. And this choice you're going to make is going to impact the neighborhood. I get that Sea-Tac Civic League may support it, and I think that's great. I'm not opposed to the 1,100 jobs coming to Virginia Beach. I'm opposed to the lack of transparency, the lack of knowledge of this product, this company, that's already a... company that's already established here, moving and leaving a vacant building to build a new one. We can do better for our citizens. We need to take care of ourselves and our people and our neighborhood. Bird Neck is made to maybe handle more traffic, but with two schools, a fire station, churches, and homes less than 10 feet from the main road, it's not made to take 1,100 cars that are going to come into this facility. And oh, by the way, since you are housing military-grade items, is there security? Is there going to be a gate there? Is that going to cause a backup? Ask Dam Neck Road how it worked out for them when Dam Neck was fixing their gate in their facility to come in. It took 45 minutes to travel less than half a mile to the gate to get onto the facility. We need to be careful in what we're doing. I am 110% about growth for this area, because I committed here. I bought a home. I put money into that home, put money into my neighborhood. I'm a proud, now Virginia Beach resident. And I want to be proud of the fact that our voices are heard and taken into consideration. And when we're doing something, we don't do it in under two months. That's not how things work. When you do something fast, there's consequences at the end of it. Take our time, do it right. And if at the end, whatever the outcome is, if it's done timely and correctly, people will appreciate that. And that's what I look for when I'm voting for my voice. You are my voice.
Your time's up, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
David Rooks and Billy Birdsong.
No, she only, you're not representing the Civic League, are you?
She is. The Alice Creek homeowners. And we have a statement here, a request to be thrown and asked.
I'm sorry, Barbara, but, sir, come on forward, please. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name's David Rooks. I live at 996 Alice Creek Lane. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak this evening. This morning, Governor McAuliffe announced that Global Technical Systems is investing $54.7 million in a 540,000-square-foot facility. This announcement comes prior to the City of Virginia Beach Council vote tonight to rezone the property formerly Alice Creek Golf Course. As I voiced my opposition for the project, I would like you to believe that, I would like to believe that your decision hasn't already been made. I am in support of GTS staying and growing its business in Virginia Beach, but I do not support the location or the access exit point off of Bird Neck Road. I am most concerned for the safety of my family and my neighbors while trying to exit our neighborhood and making a left onto Alice Creek Lane on their way to work and school, as this has been an ongoing issue with the addition of Stratum Court and Chrisa Court neighborhoods being added off of Bird Neck Road. Has the city considered an alternative access exit off of Oceana rather than Bird Neck Road? Is my question to you. If not, please consider revisiting the traffic study at peak times and peak seasons on Bird Neck Road with consideration for traffic light at the intersection of Bird Neck and Alice Creek Lane. I understand that Sea-Tac Civic League is in support of the rezoning and approval of the GTS expanding its business in Sea-Tac. I'm not currently a member, but I will be very soon. But I also want you to understand that the Civic League does not represent all that are directly affected by the rezoning and possible building in the Sea-Tac area. The City of Virginia Beach bought the property, the Alice Creek Golf Course Driving Range property, in 2006 for $1.4 million with open space funds. And they want to transfer the property to Virginia Beach Development Authority and sell the property to GTS for $1.2 million. I'm concerned that the sale of the property is being devalued by the city for incentives for GTS to build. This devalues every other piece of property in the area. Our home values will reflect this as less people want to move into an industrial area with their families. This process has been fast-tracked through the city without transparency until today. It is our constitutional right to be fully informed on any and all projects that use our land and our tax dollars. I don't believe the City of Virginia Beach properly notified the citizens most affected by the rezoning, and should look to revamp its notification process to include social media and neighborhood websites. I ask you to slow the process and give us citizens a 60-day deferral with time to look over the details, as the decision will affect our community in the future. In closing, please reconsider zoning, selling the land at a loss, and keep it as open green space for Virginia Beach citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Billy Birdsong and Barbara Messner.
Good evening. My name's Billy Birdsong. I live two houses down from Alice Creek Golf Course. Just wanted to voice a couple of concerns. Every morning when I start my day, I go to work right around 8:00, 8:30. For me to pull out of my driveway, it'll take me 10, 15 minutes just to pull out with all the traffic coming down Bird Neck. Now, this is before we employ 1,100 to 1,200 people at any given time. I'm just curious on the traffic patterns that are up and how it wouldn't affect the neighbors so much. Along with that is, Alice Creek is a wildlife refugee. There's plenty of deer, raccoons, anything that you can think of in this area is in Alice Creek Golf Course. With, if this plan is carried out environmentally, what's going to happen to the wildlife? Because if you go right through those woods, that's Oceana right there when the speed limit is 55 miles per hour, I don't think the deer are going to have too good of an afternoon after that. Also, last thing I want to leave with is, if you go down to the end of Norfolk Avenue, a couple blocks away, there's an old abandoned warehouse that used to be a company. What if this comes down to it, and all this is done, the company doesn't move in, or say if it fails, and this was all done for no reason? What if there's already a building a block away that could possibly hold this or add on to it? But why create something when there's already something that could be utilized? That's really all I have to say. Like I said, I live right next door, love where I'm at. I like it the way it is.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Barbara Messner and Adam Dobbins.
Good evening, mayor that's missing, council members, city attorney, manager, and staff. First, the public notice about rezoning. It's really hard to hear in here. The city-owned Alice Creek property on South Bird Neck Road was advertised on November 5th in the Beacon. The city purchased this land in 2006 with open space funds for $1.6 million. And now, in a bait and switch, wants to rezone for light industrial to accommodate a specific private company. A supermajority, 9-2 vote, is required on all city-owned land. No one on this council who has any interest in Town Bank should be involved in any negotiations or votes on this project. The Development Authority meeting minutes from last April proved two things. The private company involved in rezoning proposal, Global Technical Systems, has a relationship with Town Bank. Development Authority Commissioner Michael Levinson, a Town Bank director, should have abstained but cast an illegal vote to award GTS $125,000 grant. Mr. Levinson was caught casting an illegal vote in the recent City View 2 project, and Councilman Moss called for an investigation. Now, we have another case of Mr. Levinson casting an illegal vote due to his relationship with Town Bank, but this time for Global Technical Systems, for whom the city seeks to rezone public land. Mayor Sessoms, obviously, cannot be involved in discussions or votes on this matter due to your relationship with Town Bank. Councilman Wilson, who is not here, cannot be involved in any discussions or votes on this matter due to her relationship with Berkshire Hathaway Realty, a fully-controlled subsidiary of Town Bank. Mr. Moss, you call for a special investigation when Development Authority Commissioner Michael Levinson cast an illegal vote on City View 2 project recently. Here is evidence the same. Michael Levinson, a director at Town Bank, has done it again. I ask you, Mr. Moss, to be consistent and call for a deferral of this vote until this illegal matter can be investigated. You're aware Ms. Phillips, Finance Director, has failed to have an audited financial report. In addition to the conflicts of interest, this is under three minutes. Where once again relationships with Town Bank are involved, we demand a 60-day deferral. Everyone was not notified. According to the 14th Amendment, our rights to equal protection under the law and due process have not been met.
Your time is up.
Okay, and.
Your time is up.
Okay, I'm turning in the petitions, because you were so rude to Harsh and air official statement. Hopefully, somebody else can have time to read it. Thank you.
Adam Dobbins and Marjorie Leish Parker.
Adam Dobbins is a citizen American. And he has a signed letter he would have liked to have first been read. The last.
You've already had your time.
I'd like to allow it.
My point is, and I just want his point is, I think that she doesn't understand our proceedings, and if she really is representing formerly the Civic League, just please, if you just would let me manage this, that would be great. If that is true, then I think we should reset the clock for seven minutes and let her have the seven minutes, if that is in fact true.
I agree. I'd make a motion.
Do you represent the Civic League, ma'am?
Yes.
Barbara, please.
Barbara, the other lady.
The homeowners, her Brooklyn Court and Chrisa Court.
Yes. But I would request that we set the clock for seven minutes and give her the chance to talk.
The clock doesn't set at seven minutes, but I can time it.
Thank you.
All right, set it for seven minutes, then. Council members want it, let her have it. It's fine. Come on, come forward, ma'am.
So I will start off by reading Mr. Adam Dobbins's affidavit. My name is Adam Dobbins. I'm a retired Navy SEAL. I live at 1,000 Chrisa Court, directly across the street and in view of Alice Creek Golf Course. Thank you all for allowing my letter to be read in my absence, as I am unable to attend this important meeting. I will reiterate the word "important," as this is fast-tracked. Project seems to be a train that was set in motion without our community being properly notified or represented, nor does this project represent the overall wishes of our community. This project is going to set the precedence for the future of Virginia Beach. How many other projects are going to follow suit or come to light that will be fast-tracked without the full representation or the best wishes of our community? The city's pitch that we could lose this investor if they do not obtain this property seems to be a ridiculous threat, given that there are other areas of the Virginia Beach that could accommodate such a facility without such a negative impact on our community. Maybe this investor plans on saving some of this beauty of the property, as previously stated, but the citizens and visitors to this area will lose the property forever if this project goes through, as the property will be fenced off and be exclusive to only this company. I bought my house because there was a golf course across the street and a park near it. At the time I bought my house, the city had big plans to improve the park, which were shut down. Stopping that park project and adding a manufacturing facility will lower property value. Park equals potential upward value. Manufacturing plant equals a potential down value. It is common sense. The bowtie guy from the city, pardon me as I do not have my name, stated that Bird's Neck Road traffic studies showed that it could handle the influx of traffic. That intersection, Alice Creek Lane and Bird Neck Road, is already very dangerous. I have to make a U-turn to get into my neighborhood every time when coming from the northbound Bird Neck Road Lane. The curve, close proximity to Frazee Street from a southbound lane, has bushes and trees in the median that make it a hindrance to see the oncoming traffic. It is very, it is a very dangerous intersection. I ride a road, bike, and I run. Most of my closest calls of getting hit by a car in Virginia Beach have happened at that intersection. If this project comes to fruition, there are many safety issues to be addressed. This is also a major stop for our school buses. We need to keep the children's safety in mind, as well as our own. A break in the median, such as what was already done in front of the Raybo Baptist Church, should be considered for Chrisa Court. When this manufacturing company raises their quotas of shipping, many more large semi-trucks with containers are going to be pulling in and out of Bird Neck Road, creating an already dangerous intersection to make it even more dangerous. I love living in Virginia Beach, and I feel that turning over such a beautiful piece of property with so much to offer, the community would be a waste. Let's do something that, with this property, keep it for the citizens and visitors and keep Virginia Beach great. Not tainted with manufacturing facilities so close to such valuable oceanfronts. Signed, Adam S. Dobbins on December 4. And then to continue, we are very concerned, residents of Virginia Beach who recently found out about the major proposed changes to the zoning near our homes. We have also just found out that the new hub zone designation has been given to this area. It is, and it is not listed on the city's zone maps. It has to be done after March of this year. We respectfully demand at least a minimum of 60 days to do our own research on traffic impacts, environmental impacts, the financial impact of another Virginia Beach economic development, and to see the letter from the Navy that actually states that they support GTI to be building on this land. Very interested in that. Subsidies to yet another major private company. This GTS Global Techno, or GTS in Lynnhaven District was just given $125,000 grant in April. Now, they would like to move their facility and have us to pay a relocation fee so that they can come to a new district and train their employees. They are also located in St. Petersburg. Of the 1,100 jobs, how many are really going to be just for the Virginia Beach residents? Are they also transferring employees from the Florida location and considering that new jobs in Virginia Beach? The Bird Neck Road quarter has always been a residential and light industrial. Light industrial, Mr. Jackson, part of the Sea-Tac resident Civic League, was quite disgusted to realize that light industrial would pertain to this, when he was under the impression that light industrial meant keeping, you know, a low number of employees and having similar businesses along Bird Neck, like the Granite Manufacturing Company and the CrossFit Gym and things like that, that fit that warehouse with multiple businesses. So that was something that was brought up in that Sea-Tac Civic League as well. Where are the approvals of the branches of the military? And from Rear Admiral Jack Scorby, the CEO of the Navy Mid-Atlantic Region on the East Coast. And of course, there's always the concerns of a possible jet crash, and that's anywhere. So why is this area just being deemed safe for the Navy, for 1,100 folks? Why not it be safe for any youth? You know, just inherent cost of risk of living where we are. Also, to include, and those who all live in the Virginia Beach oceanfront, the dangers of this added traffic is great. There are two elementary schools on Bird Neck and a first responder station, as we mentioned earlier. The added tourist traffic in the warmer seasons will make Bird Neck a gridlock mess potentially. And the proposed facility will be as close as 70 feet from, correction, 370 feet from the front door of that business to the front door of someone else's. I don't know how you would feel to have 1,100 people going in and out of a door 370 feet from your front door. And again, the impact that brings. This is not a, and this is 24/7. It's never going to stop. So when you come home and want to take a deep breath and you're actually home, are you when somebody 370 feet across from you is doing shift changeover and, you know, who knows how many shifts they're going to have? And how many folks are coming in and out at all given times? And semis are left running on at night or during the day? And how many semis are going to be coming in and out? Will Bird Neck really be able to handle 10 semi-trucks when between, the distance between one light to another is under .1 miles? A semi is approximately 55 feet. So 10 of those lined up, traffic plus buses, and a fire truck that needs to get to your home? Things to consider about. So all these businesses on Bird Neck Road combined only employ a few hundreds, a few people. So keep that potential. Thank you for letting me speak again.
Right next speaker.
Marjorie Leish Parker and Curtis Clark. Kurt Clark.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to stand here tonight and speak.
Thank you all for allowing me to stand here tonight and speak. All of you have probably heard me talk before, and I'm here because I am always concerned about impacts on the environment. When I think about natural trees and plants being destroyed, when I think about wildlife that will go where, will be destroyed, when I think about all of those things, it bothers me. Why are we destroying a natural area if there is other spaces in Virginia Beach that could be used for this factory? Why is it that this has been kept a secret? Why has that been? Is there something in it that we are not supposed to see? Why is this happening all of a sudden? I don't live in the area where this is going up, but I can certainly understand the concern. Why is it that the Civic League and a few other people get to make these kinds of decisions? If nothing else, I would ask that you not vote on this tonight and that you take time to look at the studies that the gentleman said had been done. The studies have been done. Let people see it. Let them see what you came up with, or what they came up with as an environmental impact, because I believe he said environmental impact study. So what does it look like? I believe he said there was study done on traffic. What does it look like? Nobody knows what it looks like, except those few individuals that were involved. And I think that's totally unfair. The other question that I have to, that I wanted to ask, I heard and I saw in the paper, wow, jobs, average salary $74,000. Well, that sounds like it might require some special skills. Do the people in that area possess those skills? Are people going to be brought into the city to take those jobs? Just a question. I also have one other point that I'm going to set down. Why, why the loss in money? Why is the property being sold for less than it was purchased for? These are just all general questions, and I heard a lot more from other people. Those questions deserve to be addressed. I think the citizens deserve to have answers. And again, my main concern is the impact on the environment. No matter where you live at in Virginia, no matter where, destruction of trees and natural plants affects everybody. So those are the kinds of things that I think we should look at. Again, thank you very much.
Kirk Clark and Mrs. Marsh.
First of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Kirk Clark. I live at 1,000 Carissa Court, directly across the street from the property that's being developed in question. I live next door to Adam, the retired Navy SEAL. I'm a retired Marine myself. And one of the things with this whole process being directly across the street from it and learning more and more as to, as we go forward, questions and different concerns, is just the transparency of this. The timeline in regards, which has been addressed before, for us to process and be able to make a rational decision, which I would hope you would desire the same also, that is a big concern. Jobs, jobs are being addressed, okay? What are the guarantees? You know, I've said that before, speaking to the Planning Committee when we were here last time. What are the guarantees? I'm definitely for the jobs, for the environment, because I love C-TAC. I've bought into, just like the other young lady said, I've bought into the community. This is my home. I don't plan to move, but each and every step that we take, it affects us. It affects our environment and making sure that these young men and women within the C-TAC community are able to make an impact, if that is the case. Traffic study, looked at the, well, the traffic study, as was addressed earlier, it's not in detail. It's not over a time period that will give you, once again, that transparency to make sure you're making the right decision. One of the things that I addressed was the idea of using Oceana Boulevard as a different access point and seeing what the city can do in regards to that, because now you're going to have tractor trailers that are coming in and out. Yes, it's over a 24-hour period, we disperse it, but you're still adding to that population of large moving vehicles that are coming through that space. The access exit point, stormwater. I've been dealing with the city. I've lived here for almost 10 years. I've been dealing with the city for stormwater issue in my backyard. So I'm not trusting of the process that we're going to ensure that everything is done. And that's personally speaking in regards to the issues that I've been dealing with. So I'm in agreement in regards to giving this some more time. If there's a deferment to where we can truly process this, one of the things that I also feel is concerning, I'm not speaking for C-TAC Civic League, is all the information that was presented to the community. So in turn, the ones that were able to say, yep, I'm for this, they had everything that they needed to make the right decision. And I thank you for your time. Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Marsh and William Bailey.
Council members, it's good to be here again. I am opposed to this rushing of the approval of this rezoning. I'm very concerned that you haven't adequately informed the citizens, many who are here and many who have created a petition very recently because they've just learned about this. You all went to a retreat in February that notes are online that say that you are going to expand the public understanding of the price of government. That's one of your goals, according to the city manager. You're also going to deliver city services at the most cost-effective manner. And you want to maintain the AAA bond rating. These are all wonderful things, but when you rush through things, you make mistakes. Last year, I sat in these council chambers and listened to all of you, and you believed we had to rush through a $6 million increase for the schools, all right? It had to be done. We couldn't pause. We couldn't really look at it. It had to go through. People said taxes would go up. They said they were already, you know, having a hard time paying their taxes. And almost, I think, all of you voted, raise it $6 million. Lo and behold, what happens a few months later? The school district tells us, oh, we have $20 million. Huh, look at us. Do we get the $6 million back? Do our tax bills go down? No. You made the same problem with Asheville Park. Somebody on the Planning Commission said, put through Asheville Park, and if I've got the name of it right, they've got flooding. I'm telling you, when you rush, you make errors. And you're very good at spending money. I've come to talk to you before about spending money. I would like to know what the debt capacity is for the city so we don't ruin the AAA bond rating. I've asked that online. I'm going to ask it again, but I think we need to know, we're spending all this money, and what we're doing is we're spending it for the future generations. When you spend $1.43 billion in 15 years, or you don't fund the pension liabilities for that amount of money, because you're funding other things, obviously, with that money, and you spread it out to 26 years, you're spending money faster than you can pay it back. And so I really ask you, you're going to give $1.8 million from the state fund, $1.8 million in a possible matching grant, and maybe other grants, and you're going to have this property sold at $1.2, which is less than the price it was paid for. How does this become something that's cost-effective and good for the citizens if you're losing money and you're rushing through it? Don't rush through it. Defer. Get a nine-to-two supermajority vote. And really think about this, because the citizens are who you represent. It shouldn't be something you selfishly decide. You should consider the citizens, and there are a lot of us here tonight speaking about it. So please, take a moment, put this on pause, answer everybody's questions, and then come back and vote on it. But don't rush tonight. Thank you.
William Bailey and Diana Howard.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Mr. Hanson, I'm William Bailey, President of Virginia Beach Firefighters. Want to go on record tonight as supporting the Owls Creek Development. It's $50 million. It's 1,100 jobs. I think that our community needs that to diversify the economy. Our teachers, our police officers, our firefighters, all our employees are in need of increased raises, better benefits. I think that's what we're looking for. That's been the goal of this council for 20 years, is to diversify the income. I think that, on the other side, I think the developer has indicated he'd be willing to put a stoplight in there. Hearing from the citizens tonight, they clearly feel they need a stoplight. So if he's willing to put one in there, I think we should, if he puts that in, and that'll help take care of the children and the school buses out there on the traffic, because Bird Neck Road does, in that stretch, get up to speed a little bit. So I could support that. And as far as the deferral, I think there's always going to be controversy whether we have a deferral or not, because most times it's, nobody wants it in their neighborhood. But I could also concede, if you wanted to move it to, you know, the first meeting in January or sometime in January, I could support that also. But clearly, we're in support of the project. I think the state's looked at it, and I think it's a good investment in the community. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to answer the question about why in this area, specifically over at Bird Neck instead of some other area where we have plenty of room with existing buildings. Recently found out that the city's proposed rezoning of Owls Creek property at Bird Neck is in a federal hub zone, which stands for Historically Underutilized Business Zone. If the company that wants to build the facility is in this spot and they get certified for the hub zone, it will qualify to compete for 3% of all federal contracts specifically set aside for hub zone businesses, and that's billions of dollars. Not only does the company have to be located inside a hub zone, it must be a small business, 51% owned by U.S. citizens, and 35% of its employees must also reside within the hub zone. So this explains why the C-TAC community leaders like Gary McCollum and George Mims would be for this. From a federal contracting perspective, seizing the opportunity to give your company an edge makes sense. The local company wants to build 500,000 square feet facility in the spot previously occupied by a money-losing golf course. The company plans to consolidate and expand in Virginia Beach headquarters and operate at the site. Many have asked why, and to me, the hub zone implications answers that question. Thanks.
Your Honor, that's all the speakers registered.
Mr. Royal.
Got a lot of traffic engineers out there. I've tried to tag as many of these as I can. I hope I hit all of them. If I don't, please ask me. Flooding, it's not going to flood. We, the regulations, you just spoke to all those engineers the other day. Regulations are getting much, much tougher. Staff is going to make sure that we toe the line. There's no way anybody is putting any chemicals out into the creeks. That's just not going to happen. That's not allowed. There's no way in the world that could happen. So flooding's not going to be an issue. We have a huge borrow pit in the back. We've got extensive area there to hold the water back. There's lots of ponds on site. That's just not an issue. I'm not sure everybody understands what an environmental study is. I think what I'm hearing from the folks out there, they seem to think that it has to do with the wildlife. And environmental site assessment has been done on the property, but typically, that's looking for buried things, buried tanks, pollutants that must be removed. And that has been done. And there's a couple of tanks from the old gas, from the old golf course that we have to remove out there. That's not a part of the application unless you have a residential-type application, but I mean, we've done it. So that's why it's not in the staff report, which, again, the traffic study has, a full traffic study was done. We absolutely did not do it in a time when the traffic was light. Even if we tried to do that, and we wouldn't from a professional standpoint, the staff wouldn't allow it. We've done it at the appropriate time. It's been reviewed. I wish your traffic engineer was here, but I mean, the staff report shows you that there's a heck of a lot of capacity on this road. It's very much under capacity right now. The creek connected to Lynn Haven, I mean, we're going to clean up the water before it goes out. And I say clean up, there's nothing other than the pollutants that we, the phosphorus removal that we do for every site out here. Nothing is coming out of the building as far as waste materials from the products being manufactured. One of the speakers spoke that the company was from Romania. I'm not sure where that came from. They're Americans. They're, he's a veteran, so this is American-owned, Mr. and Mrs. Spitzer. Transparency. Good gracious. This is how all of these are done. I don't need to tell you guys that, but I mean, it's been a month since Planning Commission. There was a sign posted a month before that. Letters are not sent out to everybody. I'm telling you guys, you know, but I'm telling for them. The immediate neighbors get letters. Everybody around does not. It's difficult for us to notify every single person in the area. So what we do is, we look for a Civic League. The only Civic League, I'm not sure what this lady was talking about, but the C-TAC. So we reached out to C-TAC to talk with them about what the concerns were, what they were expecting to see. And C-TAC has invited these folks, and we met with them several weeks ago to talk with them. That was the best way we could reach everybody. I'm blinking red, but...
Go ahead. We'll give you another minute, because you had a lot of speakers.
Okay, so, well, the main thing I want to get to, to make sure I get time, is deferral. We can't afford a deferral. We do need to keep moving. I mean, it's met the rules and regulations. Fast track, to me, would be, we approve it at Planning Commission one week, and two weeks later, you guys see it, and it's only been through a few weeks in the process. It's been in the process many, many months. It's public information. It's open. Your professional staff has reviewed the traffic studies and reviewed everything else. They're the ones that understand this information. Again, it's open for anybody to see. We haven't hidden anything. So from a transparency standpoint, this is how all of these are done. They get notified the same way. We're required to put signs up. It's advertised in the beacon, and that's the best way to notify folks, other than the immediate neighbors who do get a letter from city staff. I think that's all.
Any questions, Mr. Royal?
I'll defer to Mr. Ernst, his district.
If I could just, just to clarify, Mr. Royal, there's no wastewater or chemicals that are being produced on-site that would be released outside of the building, is there?
Absolutely not.
Can you kind of, because I think it really gives people a lot of concern, the word "industrial" in terms of the use there. Can you give us a little bit more of what really is happening, you know, inside the building in terms of the actual manufacturing? I don't think, it's not your traditional assembly line, you know, dirtier stuff.
Well, it kind of is. It's very much automated inside, but it's an assembly line of sorts of the products that they're putting out in there. It's hard to describe. I mean, it's not like building cars where you've got some oil and things like that. I'm not sure what the waste products are, but typically with industrial-type uses, waste has to be gathered on-site in the appropriate manner and disposed of in the appropriate manner at the appropriate place. Long gone are the days where people could just dump this stuff out in the back creek. That's not going to happen.
And the stormwater component, because obviously you will have some more previous areas there, but you fall under the exact same requirement in terms of having to collect and treat any stormwater that is on-site, correct?
We have to reduce the volume. We have to hold back to pre-development levels. We have to remove a certain amount of phosphorus, which is the pollutant loading material that we try to remove here in Virginia Beach. Probably, we'll remove more than what we're required, just because of the size of the existing pond we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Moss.
As the applicant, and also then the person who wants to be the buyer, will there be any controlled access? It was mentioned, you know, that you'd be fencing. So I know what controlled access, will there be controlled access beyond the perimeter of the actual building? Would there ever be fencing on the gate? Or there'll be a security guard where you show your card so that cars are backing up on the highway? What is the controlled access requirement of your facility?
We do have fencing around it. I got asked this in Planning Commission, but it's not entirely around the project. It's really a deterrent. We do have a gate. It's further back. And we, the same thing that was brought up there, we did not want people to back up.
Could you indicate me on that property where that gate would be located, please?
It's shown right here, but...
And what's the distance from the entrance from the roadway?
That's probably 60 feet or so.
Well, I'm very familiar. I drive the base every day on a controlled-access facility, so I have firsthand experience. And that's a much longer than 60 feet coming off Permittal Boulevard to go to SA. It's probably over 100 and something feet, and traffic backs up on a left turn line. So I'd be interested in hearing from the staff, and under the best of conditions of nine phases, how you make that operate and not back up traffic on that roadway. How long is that left turn line, right turn line that comes in there? How many feet?
Oh, it's... Oh, it's probably a couple hundred feet.
Okay, I'm going to, I'll come back to the staff. We're going to ask that question because I have firsthand experience, and I just know what that's like.
Right.
And it eats up lots of space.
And, and we've been telling the client that likewise, that you can't have people stopping to check their card and go in. It will back, you won't get your people in on time.
Well, that gate can't work. I'm just telling you from firsthand experience.
Well, I, I think the intention is to close the gate after people are in such that just the average person can't drive in there.
I'm just, I'm supportive of the project. I'm just telling you realistically, that will work. Now, secondly, I'll have to talk to staff about that. Secondly, will this building be registered with EPA for the types of material, controlled materials you have in your building? And will it fill up on the National Registry the type of materials you have if you're using hazmat? Are you on that registry list?
I can't honestly answer that. I'm not sure, but I'm, if they're required to, I'm sure they will. It's, it's a lot of carbon fiber, from what I understand.
Probably not, but I'm just curious because there is a National Registry for that. And this is really more for the staff on about the drainage, but those are just the two questions. But I do think you're going to, I'd like to say, if we get this down to some discussion, that the location of the gate and how it operates has to be at a distance that really allows that traffic movement because as you slow down, you look at that stoppage. I don't know how your traffic modeling, if you're not used to security places, probably doesn't account for that adequately because we don't have many places at the beach that do that, but that will not work.
Okay. Ms. Henley.
One of the things that concerns me is the perception that this is being fast-tracked, and I want to make certain that, that's not the case. I'm reading from the transcript from the Planning Commission, and Mr. McCollum spoke at the Planning Commission, but he hasn't spoken here tonight. You said that you were representing the city, so perhaps you can answer this. He said that he was asked about a year ago by the C-TAC Civic League to be a representative for the community to work with economic development on the use of this property. And over that year, Warren Harris and that team looked at several different opportunities that might come to Owls Creek, and I can tell you that none of those matched what's on the table today. And he talked about a meeting with the community leaders regarding this facility in C-TAC on October 9th, 2017. Can you address the, this situation, or this question of the use of this property and, and whether or not we are, we are fast-tracking, or how much time we have actually spent on this and, and these meetings with the community?
We've, we've probably been working on it for six to eight months. Again, you, you work on things before you file it with the city. As you know, the city has their process, and you submit, and there's a certain period of time that staff reviews it. At least a month before Planning Commission, whenever that is scheduled, we have to post a sign. Letters are sent to the immediate neighbors. There's probably two weeks before is when it has to be advertised in the Beacon. I'm looking at staff. Yes, no? Yes. So that's how it's done. Economic development, yes, they, and let me back up. Mr. McCollum was appointed as somewhat of the Economic Development Director for C-TAC. They, they wanted him to work with the city hand-in-hand and find the right type of use, which, as I said, was somewhat limited by the Navy, and, and we do have a letter of approval from the Navy. There are limited uses there. So he's been working with Warren on various things to try to find the right user there that would be good for C-TAC, be good for that area, and also meet the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan calls for that to be light industrial on that west side of Bird Neck Road. So that's been the process, and it, it has taken, I, I do this, I've been doing it a long time, 38 years, and you, you pretty much have this amount of time. Some may go a little bit quicker, but still, you've got at least several months that this thing is in the process. And we've, we've reached out, as we got names from Planning Commission, C-TAC reached out, we've met with those folks. There, there's just no way that we can contact every single person out there that may live somewhere in the vicinity of it. We reach out to the civic leagues. That's the best way we can to get the most people and make them aware of it.
Well, I, I was interested that the community had been working with economic development, even in the selection of this particular use, is that perhaps you might want...
Yes, thank you. My name is Ray White with the Department of Economic Development for the City of Virginia Beach. We have, as Mr. Royal has said, met with the community on two occasions. On October 9th, the leadership of the community, including the officers, board of directors, all the churches in the area, and others attended a meeting with us. Mr. and Mrs. Spitzer was there, answered their questions, basically told them about the project. And then we had a follow-up meeting with the civic league. The entire, it was an official civic league meeting. That was on November, November 15th. Several of the speakers tonight were at that meeting. They, each one had an opportunity to come up front to express their concerns. Mr. Harris, our director, responded to most all of them. We told them any information they wanted, we would be glad to provide to them. There was some takers on that, and we did provide that information to them. So besides the other efforts that we had, those things were done. Also, I had just got a note I'd like to share with you from Mr. Spitzer regarding a couple of the issues tonight. The gate will be open the whole time. We are actually working, and will be closed only on the weekends. He also said we will not be registered for hazmat, as we do not have any. So those are responses to, to those two questions.
Well, I, I do appreciate that not all members, not all people who live in an area belong to a civic league. So a civic league is not always the only spokesperson. But you said that the meeting was open, and other people who were not members of the civic league were invited and did attend.
Well, the invitation was sent out by the civic league, and I believe several of the speakers were not official members of the civic league. I think they're planning on joining now, as we heard. But again, the civic association would have to address the specific attendance. They had a sign-in sheet that they collected and kept for themselves. And it was probably about 30, 35 people there, I would say, at that civic league meeting.
Thank you.
Before he departs, can I ask a question, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Go ahead.
On the, on the gate being open all the time, good time, is the gate going to be manned, and the people are going to be stopped with a badge to certify their ability to enter the property? It's the badge-checking process that's the flow check. So is it going to just be opened is one thing, but is it going to be guarded, and it's going to be badge-checked as they enter the property?
That's a good question, and my response is that, right now, their current facility, when you enter the building, that's when you show your badge to enter the building. They have, as far as I'm aware, they have no plans to check badges at the gate. It would just be when they get ready to enter the facility.
Well, I think that would be an important condition here to ensure otherwise that traffic pattern will not work.
Thank you. I'm sure they would be fine with that.
All right. Any, any more council members?
I have a question for staff, but not for them.
Okay. Thank you. You want to answer the question?
Yeah, I want to get back to the drainage piece, just to give the people the comfort. We have the drainage retention basis. We've adopted this new 10-year drainage standard, which I assume would apply to this application with this new. Is that correct? Someone could come forward and answer my question, that'd be great.
That's correct.
So that would be, that's 12 inches of rain in a 24-hour period, correct? I think that was...
Depending on the location, it's a 24-hour period.
So in this particular case, I think we're adding about a net 10 acres of impervious surface. Is that about right?
Yes, sir.
I think it's about, I did a wrong math up here. I'm just trying to get an idea. I'm roughly right, you know, nuke math, you know, just rough order of magnitude. But, so that means, so that means that there's additional capacity within the drainage place that's on-site to absorb that amount of rainfall coming off the additional impervious surface and be properly treated before it exits into the estuary. Is that correct?
No, yes. She was telling me they may have to do alterations to the pond, but yes, the enters, yes.
Is there any additional margin? Just trying to think about surge, not that they're required to have, but I'm just inquiring from a point of reference. Is there any additional surge capacity in that pond, given where the water comes in versus where the water exits the pond that's over and above the 10-year drainage standard? Do you know?
I don't know if there's capacity, but our requirements would require them to make the 100-year storm, which is at least three or four inches higher, pass through the system safely without causing any problems to adjacent properties.
Okay, that's important. I just want to get that down to record because many people don't know that we've changed our standard. The staff is trying to be more proactive in making sure we are not creating flooding problems for adjacent properties. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Mr. Ernst?
Well, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I certainly understand the concern from the community. You know, it's, it's, change is always scary. We, we certainly were saddened when the golf course was no longer viable and, and closed down. We then took initiative to go out and try and find additional uses for that facility. We went out with a formal RFP process through the Development Authority to, to try and come up with alternative uses. That process did not bear any fruit in terms of anything that would be viable for there. We do have a, a parcel here that is already partially zoned industrial as well. The R 2.5 right there is, is actually not even a zoning designation for this property that's, that is viable if we wanted to return it to the private sector because there is a Navy easement over that, which would prevent a residential from being built there. The current facility, in terms of what was open to the public or visible to the public, was very little because it was a privately operated golf course. There certainly were people that had access to that, but it was not a by-right access or even a legal ass, ass, access. And certainly, what it is that you see from the street today is a berm with the driving range there, which, I mean, I drove by the other day, it's broken-out windows and those types of things. It's certainly, since the close of the golf course, has not been, been well-maintained. The, this particular use, I, I need to point out, what we're asking for tonight is for a conditional rezoning, which actually includes all of the proffers that were in here, which include the site plan, which is dramatically more in terms of shielding from the road and putting vegetation right up front so that you're not actually looking, as we have for many years with the golf course there, an unimproved parking lot with, with really no vegetation in, in front of it. It also puts in there for the conditional rezoning, the proffers that are in here, which include the, the traffic considerations, that if indeed it, this does add more traffic than our current study has shown and becomes problematic for this area, that the owner of this site would then go back in and redesign that and put in a light there at their own expense. It's critical that, you know, as a city, we look at economic development and job creations. It's something that we talk about at great length at every single retreat. I think every single council member here is supportive of doing that. This is the type of clean manufacturing jobs that, that really add an awful lot to the economic vitality of, of our city. And so I, I think that we've done what we could to, to address the, the issues. I think that we've talked through the stormwater and potential wastewater and those types of things, and hopefully, given some people some comfort to that. And so with that in mind, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would move to approve the rezoning.
I'd like to second that possibly with two friendly amendments. One, that we've mentioned that they agreed to, that there would be no badged entry to the, to the lot, so there would be no impeding of the traffic. And secondly, this is unrelated to the application, but to the revenues, that the revenues that are received for the sale of the property would be, would be deposited and back into open space where they came from, and that we would look in the budget process, which is a separate from my amendment, to look to how to restore the difference between what we spent and what we put back in, just to keep the system whole. I think integrity is important. But those are two friendly amendments.
I had actually written the security back up. I'd certainly, I'd be, I'd be supportive of both.
Mark's only, I can't do the other one. Well, ma'am, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, please.
Mr. Moss, I don't, are you discussing amending the proffer? Because that couldn't be done at tonight's meeting. You would have to bring that back with, with notice. Because this is a conditional rezoning, and the proffers are advertised in advance, and they have, they, they can't be amended. You can reject proffers that are included, but you can't ask for newer amended proffers. I don't want to slow down the process, but I am going to ask the staff to come back with the support, hopefully, of the applicant to come back with that, because that's why I'm supporting this, because I know how critical that is. I live that every day. And with that, I will do it another way, but I can do the other about the, yes, no? Well, the point that I would make on that one is, the, this is the rezoning today. The actual approval of the sale is on for your consideration next Tuesday, and that might be the better place to deal with the purchase price. I'll put the amendment in that vote, but thank you for bringing that to my attention. Thank you.
All right. Are you seconding it?
I'm still seconding the motion as it stands with, with, with my staff to bring back. I still want those proffers to be amended, and if that's not possible, I will not vote for it. So we've got to understand that that's it. That's critical to my vote, which is critical for this to pass.
The company, again, is, is, is from the area, and I think they're willing to work with any reasonable requests that you have.
Super. I'm, I'm willing to work on good faith on that. Thank you. We, we could make it a condition to the closing, to the sales contract. Yep. As opposed to an amendment to the proffer. Very good.
All right, but that, that'll have to be done at the time of the...
I understand. I just, everybody's here kind of nodding their heads, so I'm kind of thinking that's a good idea.
So it's not part of this motion?
Gotcha. And I said I retract my friendly amendments and second the motion as made.
Okay. Ms. Henley?
I just, I've looked through all of the documentation here, and I just don't see when the city purchased this property and whether it was purchased with open space money. I certainly, I just don't remember that it was. So could we have that checked, please? Because this golf course was actually jointly with a private property, and I think it's been there much longer than the open space program, so I would really like that piece of information checked.
2006, it's in, it's in the...
Well, I'm, I'm asking the staff to check that and whether or not, because if it was purchased with open space money, then it should go back to the open space pot of money, but I question whether it was.
I have the same memory you have. I don't remember purchasing that at that time, so we'll check on it.
We'll check, please.
All right. Mr. Davenport, you...
No, sir.
Looked like you had...
I, I was just going to...
Ms. Abbott?
I just, I just wanted to make a quick note, quick comment about what we've heard tonight, because I think that there is a impression that we need to be being more proactive in how we notify the public when something changes. And just, you know, I'm, I'm very supportive of this. I think we need more high-wage, high-earning jobs in this city, and so I, for me, this is a slam dunk in that regard. That said, I do think that coming into the new year, we need to seriously look at our policy and how we notify people. I don't think most people are reading the Beacon anymore. I know those orange signs don't get a lot of attention, and we have a wonderful asset with our social media outreach, and I really think that moving into the new year, we need to have a serious conversation on how we notify the public.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also in support of the project because I really think that we got, for us to find the money to fix the problems like stormwater and everything, we have to bring wealth to the city. But the other thing is, I brought up another concern that I hope we take seriously next, going forward from today, having the, the presentations in the afternoon and the vote at night. I think we have to at least gap that out, you know, to, you know, to be fair, and, you know, just to not give the impression that we're fast-tracking this. So I, I will be bringing that forward at the upcoming retreat for action.
All right. Anybody else before we vote?
Can I just make one more, more comment if I could, Mr. Vice? Not about the process, but I know some people, everybody's not an economist, but $74,000 a year job is a high-paying job. And when you look at the additional jobs that a high-paying job creates, which Dr. Cook has talked about in his number of forecasts, you get very little job growth out of a minimum wage job. It takes a lot of minimum wage jobs to create an additional job. But a $74,000 job can create up to as much as 2.8 jobs on top of the job you hire because of discretionary income that it presents, but it varies. So when someone looks at this, and that's not the only reason to vote for it, mind you, but people think that we're, the amount of taking place here, there is the environment, but people are part of the environment. but people are part of the environment, families are part of the environment, having a living wage that you can live on is part of the environment, and every one of these jobs represents somewhere between 2 to 2.8 additional jobs. And I don't think people can make light of that, and I know when no one does, when you look just how difficult it is in this economy to create a job that's paying 1.25%, 125% more than the median family income in the city. So I just think people, this is a, a bigger win than, than some people might think about, and I, and it's, and it's, and you really do have to think about the families that are, that need those jobs, and in that community of C-TAC, which you just heard from when Ms. Howard spoke, how many of those jobs have to be within that community? This is, this is a, a big win, and I'm not, and I don't put process stuff lightly, but this is a, a big win for people at the home front, and I think these, these are hard to pass up. They don't come by very often.
All right. Anybody else? Vote's open.
By a vote of nine to zero, with the mayor abstaining and Mrs. Wilson absent, you have adopted the... Well, he's absent, too. The City of Virginia Beach has changed its own.
All right. The next item is item 10, which is an ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the 2016 comprehensive plan, the Vibe Creative District Connectivity Plan, and the Oceanfront Resort District Connector Park Design Guidelines and amend the 2017 Oceanfront Resort District Design Guidelines. Do we have any speakers?
I have one speaker. Ken Cord.
Oh, really? Sorry. I sent an email the other night, hoping that you guys would look at it. I don't know if you did. I also sent one to Ms. Frazier. In that email, I have two state codes and local codes, 59.1-9.2, and it's the antitrust. And the purpose of this chapter is to promote the free-market system in the economy of this common law prohibiting restraints of trade and monopolistic practices that act or tend to act to decrease competition. So that's the first one. The other one, and it's a rather long paragraph, I'll let you guys do it, because I have things to get to. This one is 2.2-3100, State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act. I appreciate Mr. Sesam stepping out because of his conflict of interest. However, but there's, there's been other conflict of interest that have been going on repeatedly over and over. The one was where everybody knows Sesam's got caught. John, your wife was the, was within the company that was doing realty for who else? Bruce Thompson, James Wood, your mom is Doc Wood, Dorothy Wood. She sits on the Virginia Beach Developers Authority. She's the chairman. She's working with Venture Realty Group, who is connected to Sesam's. How is that possible? Well, Sesam's daughter, which there's no mistake, she's a spitting image of him, so you can't mistake who this person is. That's why he's sitting out. I find that highly odd that this stuff is going on. You guys don't even bother separating yourself and be like, you know what? Not even a no, I won't say it, but hell, freaking no. Uh-uh. Ain't gonna happen. As far as, because I know you, you're not getting any city bids, and you guys can't bid on them. That is why there's such a, a, a big stink eye from the people to you guys in having these contracts go out. This is out of control. And so with that, I'll go ahead and leave, but I'd like to have these put into the minutes, ma'am clerk.
What does it have to do with item 10?
Are there any further speakers?
No, Your Honor.
Uh, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion on the matter?
I would. The mayor and I aren't always agreeing on anything, but I like the mayor, and I think it's important that when, I don't want anyone who's watching this to draw the wrong conclusions of what's said. Yes, his daughter was with Venture. No, his daughter does not live in his immediate family, and she's got her own life. Under the state law, that is not a conflict of interest. Everybody has a right to make a living. Let's not forget that. Now, he may recuse himself for other reasons, because of appearance, but anyone that would suggest, and did suggest here tonight, that that's a conflict, that's just not right, not correct. I just don't want people, and he's not absent because he couldn't vote on this, he had another engagement that he departed to, so I want the public to know that he's out doing something that the mayor does. And I, the only one who heard would have to say that there was any accuracy to the characterizations that were put on the members of council here. There might be others that are correct, but those are incorrect.
All right. Any further discussion? Not, the vote's open.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have approved the adoption of the ordinance, comprehensive plan.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna read the approved nominations to the committees, and after I do that, if somebody will give a motion to approve it, I'd appreciate it. First, the, to the Community Services Board, Molly Trask, Cameron Randall, Linda Bright, Joyce Harvey, and Alan Marston. To the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, Brian Cuffey, Dorcas Helfand Browning, Jeff Ainsley, and Shannon Kane. To the Military Economic Development Advisory Committee, MEDAC, Captain Louis J. Shager. To the Planning Commission, Representative Kempsville Area, David Weiner. To the Resort Advisory Commission, Brian Cuffey, Ron Villanueva, Randy Thompson, and Laura Hoover. To the, that's it. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. The vote's open.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have approved. The appointment's read by the vice mayor.
Thank you. I believe we have open mic to speak...
Yes, Your Honor. I have four speakers.
Need to adjourn?